Didn't do any good.
It's 1:03. We're going to start our budget work session, maybe our last, we'll see. Marquette Township Board work session for the 2020 budget. Today's Tuesday, November 12th, and it's late, it's 1:04. So Randy, if you want to do roll call, please.
Trustee LaRue here. Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Emerson.
Here.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Treasurer Johnson.
Here.
Kirk Ratais here, and Supervisor Duran.
Here.
Staff President is Manager Gerard. Superintendent Public Works Kirk Page, new Superintendent Public Works John Kangas, and Accountant Law Stonehouse is here. And Lenny from Waters here.
He might be public, he might be staff, depends on which half he has on. Any public comment? Anything anybody wants to share? All right, so, budget wrap-up possibly. We're kind of thinking Water Department, Public Works Department I should say. We have new sheets that were added. Thanks for dating those Lois, or John, or whoever did. Dated 11-8, which is what we'll be working from. Previous ones were October 16th. New format, I think it's easier to read. I didn't have any carryover questions, so that's kind of what we're looking for. We want to start with this, and then we can do a wrap-up of the rest of them. Or Pete, yeah, go ahead Randy.
This is Pete.
That's all right, I thought I saw two hands.
Just for board information, we had a preliminary meeting with health insurance today with regard to renewal rates, and it looks like it's going to be real close to what we have in the budget. Projection right now was about between 12% and 14%. We made some alterations this morning with numbers, basically, and that might drop it down to around 11. So we don't have the final numbers yet, but it looks like it's going to be close to what we have built in the budget. So not a huge increase.
Good news.
It's set aside 10%, so.
You can stay right in that figure, we're going to do it good. We could take a motion to adopt it.
We can't do a motion here.
No, we can't do it.
But you could get a consensus to move on. Any questions on the, maybe the new Public Works budget numbers?
I have one, and I brought it up once before, and it kind of fell flat.
Okay, well let's pump it up.
On the rates for the water and the wastewater.
No change.
I have no problem with keeping them there, but I was looking at maybe raising a one penny or two cents, and dedicating that to future replacement of the system and that. It isn't much, a penny or two cents one, and just, that money's got to be dedicated to that, if we can do something like that. A replacement for anything. Dave gave me a funny look.
Start down there first, Randy had his hand up.
I was just going to say, we have done that in the past. We did, at one point, we were concerned about, this is back probably 12 years or so ago, there was concern about the level of reserve funds at that time. And basically, it had been because the board previous to that had artificially kept the rates low, recognizing that they were intentionally keeping the water rates low, or whatever reasons with, or whatever, but they basically did not build up the fund that was necessary. So over a period of five years, the board took an action for over a period of five years, it would increase 5% per year specifically to build up the retained earnings balance. So they did that months before. We've talked periodically, we've talked about establishing a rate and having it fixed for two years or three years, and then adjusting every two or three years, just to see how it works out. So you have done simpler, by you I mean the township board, has previously done similar type things, and it's certainly something you are empowered to do.
Dave, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I understand the extra money for the replacement of the infrastructure, but I think we're ways away from that yet. I think we've got a number of retained earning balances that need to be addressed, and we don't have a real idea of what it's going to take to replace our infrastructure when it comes time for replacement. I wouldn't think it'd be received very well just to add it for the sake of adding it. Yeah, you can always use extra money, but we haven't really established how much money we need and when we needed, and I think that's part of the asset management program we're waiting for. And I still have, while I don't have any real big questions about the budget that's sitting in front of us, I still have a lot of concerns about, specifically the public works side of it, and the retained earnings and the master plan for public works, and the fact that it's some 15 years old and hasn't been updated. I think we need to get a handle on that. We keep saying we're going to do it. It's been three years that I know of, and we still haven't done it. Every time we get done with the budget, we're so happy to be done with the budget, we don't look at it again. But I think it's time to address that, and I would think some of the discussions would go along with, is it time to update our master plan, or our plan for the public works, and put it in line with what we're actually doing? Because we've got a lot of things out there that the master plan or the study says we're supposed to be doing, like Grandview and Brookton Road and Phase Two of the water system, and we haven't really elected to do any of them, and I think there needs to be a discussion on whether we need to do that, or if we need to update our plan. And I'm not suggesting that we even contemplate going on spending thousands of dollars to have somebody come in and do a study. I'm suggesting that it might be time to sit down. We've got personnel in place that know how to do that. It might be time to sit down and just do an update to that plan, and bring it into line with reality. And that's kind of going all the way around to address what Ernie said. No, I don't think we need to increase the rates until we got a handle on retained earnings and where that money's going, and get a good handle on how much money we need to put away.
And we talked about paying some loans down, and the variables, and 75 years has been put into place, so we need to see that.
I just don't think we can get a good handle on all that until the asset management programs are done. We know how much money it's going to take to replace the infrastructure that we've got in the ground, and when we're going to need that money in place, and how much retained earnings can be set aside and earmarked for that. And we keep talking about taking those retained earnings and making sure they're earmarked for the things that the board wants to see them earmarked for, as opposed to the public works master plan, that really has more things that have been delayed or shelved than it has things that we're actually committed to doing. So I think it's, we're way past that time to update that, and I think if we did anything else this year, if we got, took a look at that master plan, got in line with reality, and took a look at the retained earnings, and got that earmarked for where it's actually going to go, and where we want it to go, and set some policies on how we're going to spend it, I think we'd be a big stroke of work this year.
Okay, Pete?
I think this would be a good year to do something like that. We have the luxury of not being behind the eight ball, you know, because we have some excess money and that different one, because we're lending one department to another department. And we really don't know about our water system, the secondary, do we want to go to Phase Two? Do you want, there's lots of what-ifs, we've been trying to sort of dragging our feet on some of that stuff, instead of really getting down and deciding what we want to do with it. And so, same thing with the numbers as far as 50 years, 70 years, whatever, you know. I just think this would be a good year to leave it alone. A lot of other counties and cities, and townships and cities have been stressed only because they haven't done things in the past, and we have done things in the past, operate. So I think we have the luxury of waiting one year and just do the research.
So you said, leave it alone, you mean the rate?
Yeah. Leave it alone, get our research done, do our studies, or whatever we have to do, and then go from there. But every magazine you read about water, electricity, and all these other things, they said, water is very important, you know. So we have to take a good look at the secondary water supply. We have enhanced, we've got Nagani there, we've got Marquette there, and everyone says, well, Marquette's going to hold us up, and they're going to do this, and you know, if we had a secondary supply, we might not take all of that. Where are we going to grow? How are we going to grow? Where are we going to go? Are we going to go up 492? The sub-division's up there, are we going to take care of that? Or are we going to go up north? We can't go south very much, you know, so. But water is very important, I think we should take it seriously and discuss it. And I think this would be a good year to sit down and wait, because we have that luxury.
Okay. Randy, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, the only thing I think that we have to decide on is the reorganization of public works, if we're going to go forward with that. If that happens, there might be some additional cost. And that's the only thing I think that's really left in the budget to deal with. I think, I talked to John yesterday, and I think they have a presentation today for us that will show us that cost and reorganization if we choose to go forward with it, so.
It is a good deal.
John, you had your hand up?
I welcome the thoughts that have just been expressed by everybody, but I think too, we have to keep in mind that even an insignificant increase is viewed as an increase. Until we know where we're headed, until we know what amount would be needed, I think it would be inappropriate to have an insignificant increase and just license people who complain about increases each time coming in. I think it's a time to let it pass.
Okay. Do you have your hand up down, or? Go ahead, Ernie.
At least I threw something out, and it came back to me real quick. What I'm looking for is long range, trying to have something in place so that they don't get hit with a lot of dollars in the future and that. If we can have something in the background, that we have to do it if something comes up that we have to replace up, there is some dollars set aside and that. And we don't get a hit, rather than hit them with $100, maybe hit them with $25, something like that. That's just using figures, just percentages and that too, looking towards the future.
One year won't make that much difference. I don't think, Ernie, that we could have a little one-year relief.
Well, and I told you guys a couple meetings ago, that in January we were going to, I wanted to try to have some kind of a strategic meeting anyway, a good work session, and this can either be part of it, or a separate one, or, you know, we need to figure out what's going to happen in the next five years.
We have to plan, because, you know, who knows who's going to be on this board after the next November? We have to give some direction of what we've seen over the past, you know, three, six, you know, how many years we've been working together, and I think we've got a pretty good handle on where we should go, what's it going to cost us.
And I believe we have until April, right, to put our names on the ballots for November?
Yes, yes you do.
So, that's a big decision there too. It's going to change the dynamics of the board as well as the township.
Right. And when you come on new, you've got a lot of, you know, a lot of stuff to catch up on.
Big learning curve.
You know, we've discussed this for how many times, so, I just think maybe we could set something down in concrete and then move on. They can always adjust, it's going to be a fluid budget anyways, you know.
We have new development coming in, we know that, that there are people that are just standing there waiting in the wings, so.
We don't have wooden sewer lines like Marquette does, so, we're in pretty good shape.
No, I think our lines are all, looking at Ishbing, Nagani, and the city, our lines are relatively new yet, and that. But you still have to look further down the road.
Exactly. But I think we've got a year this time, Ernie, to evaluate what we're going to do, where we might just see the township go, and, you know, how is it going to grow?
Randy?
Just to tag on John's right, you don't want to license people to come in or complain if you don't have to.
If you don't have to, yeah.
But if you do, if we do reorganize public works and there isn't a little additional cost, at least if they do come in, we can say, well, you know, we're adding more services for you, and hopefully cut down some other things, so, you know, that would, that would be a justification there for that, so.
Well, we had 18 meetings on the road project to justify what we did. People came in, and some people came in, they're, you know, against it, you know, but when you sat down, talked to them, and, you know, they sort of realized.
It's education, that's what it is.
It is.
It's education.
You know, you have to say more than Dave said, you don't care if my road's fixed.
I don't care though, there's, if you have edu, I don't care, there's people that'll be against it regardless of what you do, it's just the, and like, I agree with John, you don't want to license them to come in and complain if you don't have to.
Okay, I'll pull everything back.
No, it's a good discussion.
But I am interested to see.
You have to change your vote.
I am interested to see what the reorganization will cost, and, you know, whether the board by consensus would like to have it go forward.
Discuss.
Sometimes you have to, like I said yesterday when we met, you have to throw those questions out.
Sure.
We're all on the same page, or not.
You've got commitments out of everybody on the board to do something that we haven't done before. Look at it.
Okay, are we good with that part? Dazzle us, what have you got? I was looking for something in my mailbox that had numbers on it and stuff.
Right, and you should have had at least copies of this. I apologize that you didn't. We basically crunched the final numbers this morning. We're talking restructuring now, right?
Right.
Okay, so, there's some impacts at the crew leader position, which includes additional responsibilities, I think we talked about that in rolling out the plan.
Can I ask a question about that then first?
Yes.
Is that going to cause, or create, or have to implement extra training, extra licenses, you know, going to somewhere lancing, or is that going to change really the dynamics too?
I think it really depends on who posts for the position when we get it up. What we think would happen, I won't say the answer is generally no, it would be just maintaining the continuing education that we're already doing. If what we think is going to happen doesn't, then my answer would possibly change. The water operator position, we don't really anticipate there being any significant change in cost at that level, but it may change the name in the position, depending on what happens at the crew leader level. There would be a service worker backfill, which is a result of starting filling at the top where we currently have the vacancy, and working our way to the bottom to get back to seven staff members. There's no cost, no significant cost associated with that beyond what's already budgeted, because the budget that's put together assumes the original staffing levels we had before Joe retired. So those two positions, I don't see a significant cost impact. The most significant would be, of course, adding one staff member to get to two shifts of three service workers. And then there is some sort of cost associated with a shift differential, because you put people on a later shift. I'm guessing that that's going to be approximately the cost of your saved overtime by extending service hours. That's a guess, because we haven't really had a chance yet to figure out how much overtime we are going to save by extending our service hours. I'm thinking it's somewhere in the 5% to 10% range. If you look at, two pay periods ago, it was 14%, I believe, savings under this new plan. The last pay period would have had no impact on overtime. So, the total cost that I calculated is just over $40,000 increase, which is about $21,000 per utility. Kirk crushed the numbers this morning, the water rates would not have to be changed. The sewer rates would have to be increased 35 cents per thousand. So that's the net impact of this proposed restructuring, assuming that these numbers are conservative enough to stay within that 35 cents per thousand in the sewer rate.
And wastewater rates are already pretty high, we had that discussion already.
Yeah, so it would, it would go from 11-83 to 12-18 per thousand.
You're looking at a $3 a year increase. Is that per thousand, or per?
That's per thousand.
So 4,000. So $1.20, say $1.20 to 4,000 gallons. $10, $12 a year, that's not much. If the water rate don't change, doesn't change. Are we willing, so the question I guess we have is, are we willing to implement this for an additional $12 a year for the average customer?
When do we get some final numbers and the big plan?
On this, the final numbers on this?
That.
I would say we should definitely be able to have them all verified by the next board meeting, which means we'd have them done by Thursday, unless Lois has any concerns regarding verifying the numbers we're using.
I can go over on a few?
Okay.
Can you go back about like a year and tell this, or is that too big of a window, too small, to really see what the impact is? We talked about this yesterday, keeping MDOT out of the picture.
Yeah.
Because that's just, it's not real.
I think we could, I mean, it's a matter of whether or not I could efficiently get that done in two days. I could certainly try to.
That's a lot of time.
No, yeah, no, I just, I didn't even mean by Tuesday, I just meant, I was looking over the window. Is a year, would that be a good, Kirk, do you think, a year back?
Using 2018 would probably be a good measure as an average year.
Yeah, because we don't have the construction.
You know, overly bad winter, it wasn't overly warm summer, it was pretty much an average year, and so, so if you use 2018 as your benchmark, 2019, you're right, we had a lot of extra overtime because of the road construction and a couple of other things associated with that, but, but on an average year basis, I think 18 would be a good measure to see what would, what the impact of that additional hour and a half would be during, you know, during that, specifically that period, 6:30 to 8:00.
And we had freeze-up that year too, I remember, was that 17?
There really much freeze-up in 18, I think it was named 17. I mean, we had a typical winter in 18, it just came late.
Yeah.
But that really didn't impact water or sewer. That was snowfall.
And would you be able to, I was trying to think how to make it easy, could you just take the department's cumulative hours for the year, rather than going back like payroll to payroll?
Well, I'd just go right over the payroll sheet, in some areas I'm on payroll sheet.
Yeah, I don't know what that looks like.
How much overtime, you just have to, you know.
We need to look at.
What it was overtime, you just go back to the individual timesheets to see.
You really need to look at those hours at hour and a half.
You do, separate?
How much overtime happened during that hour and a half.
Okay. Let's just try and make it easy with that.
Otherwise, nothing's going to change, right?
Right.
So the question I guess the board has to, is the increased service worth the, is the increased hours of service worth that extra little bit of money?
And that is the question. The question is, does the board want to expand the service to provide that level to get beyond when people get home from work and start discovering things happening, or, or not?
And have that overlap.
It's a similar conversation to what we had with the fire department, a similar conversation that we had with the, which to the BLS ambulance, I mean, is the service worth the anticipated cost?
I think it is. I think we need to keep going, at least until we know for sure.
Well, even if it's $20 a year and worth, I'd be willing to pay that to have it free service, because $20, and that's even, I think, conservatively high, but.
At 4,000 a month, it's 16-80 a year.
Yeah, so even at $20 a year, not, most people aren't going to notice that.
That's a $1.40 a month.
Yeah, that is.
At 4,000 gallons.
Yeah.
I think it's worth it myself. Let's go.
Yeah, I think so.
We can't do anything here.
Well, by consensus.
We're giving direction by consensus.
Consensus. So the target would be the 19th, meeting on the 19th.
Now, a question for Randy, if we do implement this, would this have to be a board motion to do that, or?
Yeah.
Or does it come through your department?
Basically, you would give direction to administration to implement.
Or we just amend the budget to include that?
No, you would have to, you are signatories to the labor agreements, that you would have to take a formal action to change the structure.
How broad of a restructuring are you looking at? What have you looked at, other than just adding the personnel so that you can increase the coverage hours? Have you looked at the things we talked about the last time, about the on-call structure and that type of stuff, finding a way to work that into the scenario?
We have not discussed that. No, that discussion was not part of this.
It's a part of the overall revamping.
Certainly can be, if that's.
The reason I ask is, do you have to develop, do you have to develop a job description for crew leader?
We have a draft of that done.
Yeah, we've done that, a proposed draft. The issue that you have with changing the call structure is that would be a negotiable item under the contract.
What would be in the?
Call, the call structure, because that is a specific article in the contract dealing with how call-out is handled. So that would have to be a negotiable item. The board has the right to change workday, work hour, work schedule.
I guess I wasn't talking about the call-out scenarios, I was talking about the on-call.
Well, that's on-call.
Yeah, that's the call-out, that is the call-out article.
We've talked about it, but not to the extent of financial impacts, and the reason why we haven't gotten to that point is because of concerns we've initially heard internally about putting all of that responsibility on one or two people. It becomes a significant burden after a while, so we have to think that through before we really have a final proposal.
I guess that was what I was asking, if you had thought it through.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to the point I think you'd like it to be.
Quite frankly, one of the issues that we had is not all of the people are, it'd be difficult to ascribe all of the call responsibility to an individual that doesn't live within the township. We have employees scattered in different areas, far away as wind.
Well, also too, if you take call away, you actually decrease some of their wages by doing that, because you take some of that money away that, because they're on call every four or five weeks, I would imagine. You take that.
Focus, and that lowers that.
You would take some of that money out of their pocket, basically.
Well, that's not the, not the article, there's an article, provision of the contract that specifies how we do calls, and that would have to be modified through negotiations.
I don't have a problem with it, I just leave it the way it is, it's not costing us any more or any less, so.
The only, the only thought about that is, we should always be taking a look at ways to improve.
Yeah.
And if that would be a possible way to improve coverage at, if we would save money by changing that system and improve coverage with the restructuring that you're suggesting, if the money saved could offset the cost of restructuring, if there's money to be made and service to be improved, it should be looked at, whether it's implemented or not, it's a whole separate question, but it should certainly be looked at.
It's also a change in quality of people.
I thought about it very quick, and I am a no.
Well, internally, we have discussed it, follow up to the last two meetings.
Well, I'm not suggesting that it should be part of the budget stuff, I'm just suggesting that it should be looked at sooner or later.
Yeah, it is, you know, and our issue is actually limited staff.
And I don't have a problem with the 16, what is it, 16-80 a year? I mean, I don't, I don't see where that's a big issue for the increased service, but.
No.
I'm just trying to push a little bit further.
Understood.
I mean, there's not, there's no reason that you couldn't something similar to what the city does, where you have, you know, the public works superintendent basically be the person who receives call all the time, but then they still have to call somebody else out, because most of what we do at the price would be.
Don't go there.
4:30. Yes, Ernie.
If we move in this direction and put that increase in, I think as a board, we'd better have our ducks in order till we put the information out as to justifying why we're going in that. And the other side is, can, how can we justify the current rate of 11-83? We have to justify that at the same time, and then we're going to add additional dollars on top to justify everything and the rationale behind it. Otherwise, as John brought up a little while ago, that you're going to have people standing in the audience here complaining about everything, so, if we do it upfront, it'd be a lot less people that's going to complain than that, so. I agree.
John, have you discussed this with staff at all, and sort of what are their thoughts?
Well, it's your decision, so.
I know, but I'm just.
Well, then, you know, Lenny was at the last couple of meetings, but we've provided a copy of it to him in terms of what post-schedule is. But until the board makes a decision, we wouldn't be addressing with the staff. It's actually a decision of yours, what structure and what schedule you're going to provide services.
I probably understand, but I just would assume there's been some discussion with them. I mean.
It's known.
Yeah, that's.
So we've not met, because we have nothing to meet with them about. It's a proposal at this point.
Tell them they said it's made to do it.
An indication of which way the board's going, then we know what we'll be talking about.
Well, if you're looking for a consensus, I'd be in favor of moving forward and putting it into the budget.
I would. It'll actually show up on our rate schedule. And plus, you can have more information on that board meeting, so.
Well, they'll have some background on it, I imagine.
It'd be in their narratives.
In the narrative.
So what I'm hearing from the board is a consensus that you want us to pursue it and bring something to you for your meeting on the 19th so you can say yes or no.
Yes.
Got it?
And if we expect it to be part of the budget, we can either do it, add it in now, or, I mean, we still have to till the end of the year.
Yeah, well, it would affect the final budget, so.
Well, that's all I was going to say, was we'd have to count for it.
At this point, we have some direction from the board, so yes, we would be, so now with Lenny and, you know, the folks that say yours, what the board's considering.
I would say most of them probably know bits and pieces of the plan. But they probably don't know every last detail of this because we haven't made it a point to discuss it with them.
It's been my experience that every time you assume that, there's somebody out there that doesn't.
Well, of course.
And until you come out with a written explanation of what's being moved forward on, there's going to feel people that feel left out.
Sure.
Which causes anxiety.
We have not provided them a copy of the schedule that I presented to you last time or the explanation that goes with it, so that would be the next step.
Well, these meetings are public too, and they're on, you know, they're recorded, so it's not like they can't get the information if they're really interested.
But we want to make sure they understand.
Right.
And again, you know, we didn't want to.
It's not like we're hiding anything, is what I meant.
You know, having meetings with staff and then had no direction from the board in which direction you wanted to go, well, now we do.
It hasn't been approved by the board, so until like today, so it's.
I'm thinking Dan's just thinking.
They haven't been too deep because, well, for example, the very first thing that's going to happen is posting a one position. I'm not going to do that until.
The board actually adopts.
And I think that's what Dan's thinking, that just people are going to be thinking that their responsibilities are going to change. They've got a chance to post for a different job, so I think that's what he's thinking that, you know, but that makes sense, you know, we can't do anything.
No, I know that.
They know in general, but, you know, we're looking at a different position. We're looking at, you know, backfilling existing positions and one new position, and the two shift overlapping, etc. Which is the basis of the whole thing.
Randy?
Well, we are, and the reason we haven't had any discussions to this point is because we have a vacant position. And until you decide whether we're going in that direction or not, that position is going to change. So that's why we're doing this. We, you know, the crew leader retired. That position is vacant as it currently exists. If you want to go in this other direction, that description is going to change. It's going to have more responsibility. So before we can post it, we need to have the direction from the board. That then will ultimately open another position somewhere in the organization, probably as a service worker. So, you know, those are mechanical things that we needed to have direction from the board so we can put it together for you to consider on the 19th. And if you say yes, then we post the new job description. If you say no, we go forward with the existing.
Tom?
So the direction from the board that is required is simply a consensus today?
Correct.
All right? Let's do it.
We just did.
We did.
It's all that's how far as we can go, is just that.
Right, I know it's unanimous.
You're going to take a vote, you're going to change your vote?
Watch it, your mic's on. Watch what you say.
Still a public meeting.
What are you doing, John? So anyway, we will bring that information back to you before the 19th.
I like this. This is, this is good. This is what we're supposed to do. Just talk about stuff. I was just visiting with somebody about the city council meetings. They don't talk about stuff. This is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to ask questions and analyze and.
Yeah, I have to step out of the room to take a phone to call there for a second, but did we have kind of a meeting of minds in terms of what the new water and wastewater budget format is? Does that address the issues of the board, the question of the board?
The format or the.
The report format?
The new, the new sheets for water and wastewater. Did they give you the information that you were looking for?
Yeah, I think it did. Awesome.
Very good.
Yep.
Just more paper?
Well, you look at it and you can understand the reason behind it.
Yeah, it's a lot clearer.
Can you explain one thing on, I was looking on wastewater, on, the debts are at 574. You talked about recalculating.
Wait, give me the page.
Yeah.
Page number.
590 dash four.
And this is the new one?
590 dash four.
Okay, which, where are we?
Debt service.
Debt service, just, can you tell me what you mean, recalculating of the replacement schedule? Was that calculated wrong before or was it just updated to where it should be?
That's where we went from 50 to 75 years.
That's what I assumed.
That's what I needed to know.
That's exactly correct. I recalculated the total. I think I came up with the same number that you had talked about at the last meeting.
Amazing.
Which, it amounts to $29,098.
I just want, I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
What's that, why it was done, what's caused it?
So that number then gets applied to the principal payment on the Public Works facility because that's the highest interest rate debt we have.
You didn't think I'd just throw that out there so I have something to say, did you?
I always like to show that I can reach the same number because that means we're on the same page.
Do you want to answer to that? Always verify it.
Trust but verify?
Yeah.
I got one question.
Sure.
Question for Randy now, and the restructuring of Public Works is that, and this shouldn't cost any changes to the Public Works budget, but are you shifting building and grounds under them too?
That part hasn't been decided yet.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's.
I heard it talked about.
That would be, that would be, I mean, that wouldn't have any impact on the budget because there would not be any wage changes. It's just being what budget reports on.
Okay, and I heard that talked about. I just didn't know if that was included.
Right now, the building grounds functions fall into the general fund.
Correct.
If they were to go to the water and wastewater, you'd have to do two decisions. One would be, number one, would they be reconfigured as a public works operation, which would then impact water and wastewater rates, additional costs? Or would they be simply overseen by Public Works and still be funded out of the general fund budget, which would not impact the rates?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, just overseeing by the Public Works superintendent and.
Okay, now, and again, that would impact the crew leader.
Position.
Job description. So that, that, these are the kinds of answers that we need to have in terms of the supervisory umbrella, basically of that position, leadership umbrella.
Well, I was thinking that, because we do it at the city level, the, like, the recre, well, the Public Works is overseeing the maintenance of, like, the parks and such.
Yeah, and that's, 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 the other side of it is that building and grounds function right now is primarily taking care of the physical facilities of the buildings and parks.
Correct.
Which is not necessarily Public Works or wastewater. Those are the kinds of things that, that go into that decision.
I think that's a little far fetched, at least for right now.
Well, I would think we just worry about getting the budget done.
Yeah.
As long as we get right back on the hot topic.
Hey, January, absolutely. So figure out how to get your snow blower going because they're going to be here.
So I guess the answer for now is no.
I would recommend for right now, you'd reconstructure as it is and consider it for 2020 to the 21 budget.
Okay. Well, that was a question, you know, that was the question.
It's just the concern that I always have with ruling things like building the grounds and Public Works is the impact on rates because you then have to spread those costs that will impact the rates, water and wastewater rates.
Yeah. And it's already in general fund expense.
Well, the expenses really should not be spread to our responsibility.
Just the administration.
The salary should be paid out of the general fund.
Well, right now, it is. The question was, should that be pulled out of the general fund and put under Public Works as a division of Public Works? And that's what I'm saying. If that occurs, it will have an impact on water and wastewater rates, you know, everything on Public Works. If it's just a supervisory role, then that's different. Still under general fund, but possibly overseen by the crew leader.
That will change his responsibilities to.
Correct. But it would be a change to that description because that is not currently part of that description.
Because as of now, they basically report to you, to you, to the manager position.
I mean, we're already providing shelter, storage here.
Equipment.
Well, leave it as is for now. It'll be a future topic, I guess.
January.
January.
It works for me.
You're leaving.
That'd be part of strategic planning in January, you know, because you are going to have, you're going to have more pathways. You're going to have more trail connections. You're going to have more amenities to parks and things such as that, the building and grounds overseas.
So where are we with, I'm just on wastewater's page, with our getting away from the amortization idea and coming up with real numbers of what projects are either already or almost funded or? And then with relation to that, and what do we have to do next year?
Lois and I were just talking about this a little bit this morning. We have lists compiled with numbers associated with them. I don't think the numbers mean a whole lot yet because our asset management plans aren't done. But by the end of this year, we should be able to get a much better idea of where those numbers need to be allocated based on what our highest priorities are.
Okay.
And I think it really ties in with getting the Public Works master plan updated so that the right projects are in the right order and in the right year, so.
Okay, so we'll just wait on that.
I think we're getting the right project in January.
Yep. Put your sleeping bags. We're just going to be here every night. All right, maybe we can figure out some kind of a schedule then, what's priority, what to talk about when? Because if it all, if it all ties into the master plan, there's so, there's so many things that you're required to do. That's got to come first and then figure out how these projects fit in and the funding.
Yep.
Well, and also development plans need to be stirred into that as well, the projects that are in the hopper that require connections, extensions.
New ones, yeah.
Things such as that.
Yep. Okay, so we'll wait on this. What else?
I have no other questions.
I really didn't either. Do you want to look at the, well, I guess there's really not nothing on there, um, fee schedule?
Are we looking at any of them all?
Any of what? Of the whole budget? Yeah, this is open. We just knew we wanted to get some questions answered from Public Works.
Wrap up these guys. They can go on to figure better things out.
We can. I just wanted to check the fee schedule because we've just talked about raising rates again.
The schedule would have to be modified by whatever the board decides to do.
Yeah.
We're going to have to do, we'll have to produce a consensus budget. If this is your last work session, then we'll have to compile a consensus budget to bring back to you for final approval, which would be at your first December meeting.
So the only thing I see changing in the fee schedule, other than maybe some, where, I don't know if any other departments had any.
No, no other changes.
With the second reading of the ordinance of the fire, the fire code, that should be addressed.
That would be added.
Yeah, that'll be added where the false alarms will be.
Correct.
So that, I see that add. I see the change in the wastewater rate based on consensus of an addition of restructuring, probably 35 cents per thousand. No change in the water rate and the garbage rate going up a quarter of a month. That's all I see changing.
Now, that's pursuant to what we know right now from solid waste facilities.
Well, if they change it, it's not really on us.
It's not us.
It's not us, no.
But our.
It could be us because they're talking about changing the typical fee.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's not directly to our operation. It's their.
It's not our increase.
Yeah, it's not our increase. They're passing it on to us, which we have to pass it on to the customers.
Randy?
I have one question. I don't know if I asked this before, on the proposed rate increase on lawn meter permit. The two-inch meter was at 1325 to 1475.
That's based on actual cost.
What do you mean actual cost?
Cost of the meter. When we replace a meter, which we, I'm talking about replacement because of customer.
It's the actual meter.
Customer cost is damaged.
Okay.
So that's basically what we pay for the meter.
Are we good with Public Works, do you think? Do you feel this is a good consensus budget for them?
I do. I think it is.
So that we can get our final numbers and.
It's like any budget. It's a working budget.
Right.
We do the best we can.
We can stop at some point so that we don't need to schedule any more Public Works work sessions, right?
Amen.
Okay. Okay.
Assuming we don't come back to you with surprises in the two sessions. But I'll be the first to say if it is a surprise, so.
Sorry, if we need to schedule something, better to talk about it ahead of time.
Well, we always have the last meeting, the first or last meeting in December that we can always change it to in our final budget hearing. That's your public hearing and we can always change it. Should we have to the 31st of the year to change it, really?
We never know what kind of winter it may be. We got a phone call this morning and it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be bad day. It's only 80 degrees today.
Your statute only requires you to adopt a balanced budget by December 31st.
Correct.
It does not restrict you from modifying that budget on January.
I was just going to say that too. January 1st, it could be a whole new budget.
We just have to have the public hearing and approve the budget. That's it.
So if we have a consensus budget, Randy will probably get the ad ready for the first meeting in December, then, sort of?
The ad, the ad has to be out, has to be published seven days prior to the public hearing.
Okay, so probably.
A short timeframe. End of November, last weekend, this month. It'd have to be published, which means I have to get it to them the week before that, so.
You got Thanksgiving and.
Yeah, because it takes a while for the format to publish it.
Well, I think we got a consensus budget. I think you can get ready to.
Question, where are we on fire personnel? Are we all set with that?
That's included in the budget.
Okay, there have been no changes in that, with the direction we're going?
No, it would be, well, according to the board's, board's actions, maybe we're doing that. We're holding off until January to fill that position because right now we're experimenting with, with volunteer scheduling, using our on-call volunteers. So far, that's working all right, but we wanted to get through this busy season coming up, the holiday season, before we made a final decision on filling that full-time position.
But it is in the budget.
It is in the budget. We are anticipating, at least hoping, that that would be built from the existing on-call staff.
Are we talking one or two for the?
One.
One?
So they're covering with on-call till 8 o'clock now. They're already kind of doing it.
Before Public Works gets out here, I'd like to thank you guys for jumping through all the hoops to get the stuff back up.
Thank you.
I think we have to say with all the departments, they all put together.
Yeah, and every department did pretty well, I think. Yeah, every department did pretty well, I thought. The clerks was the best, though.
Well, there's not a ton more money coming in, so having to work with these.
I'd like to raise my wage, though, if I go back.
I asked you, and you said no, we're not going to be in the budget.
We'll do it next year.
You're the one that suggested it in the first place. Okay, so I think you're good, if you want to go, I mean, you can stay, but you might as well.
You're welcome to enjoy it, the rest of the.
Get going on those numbers for Tuesday. Anything else in the rest of the budget? I didn't know if you had any other questions, besides public works? We kind of did our walkthrough already.
I didn't have any other questions, I'm good.
I don't, I'm good.
I'm good, too.
Yeah, I am, too.
We just got some more information coming, and then we'll move on.
Okay.
Can you adjourn the work?
We can finish. Okay, what time do we have?
1:56.
1:56 is good.